Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair. Notice of this meeting has been provided to the Montclair Times, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. Notice has also been posted on the bulletin board. Madam Clerk, roll call. Present?
Present.
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 Yep.
Present.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Black of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask that we remain standing for a few, for some moment of silence, remembering Joseph Rouse, who was a local activist and community person here, particularly regarding young people. Was very involved with fraternities and just a wonderful citizen who passed away. Of course, George Walker, who passed away on Thursday, who was a Pulitzer Prize winning composer and resident of Montclair. Also Neil Simon, wonderful playwright and winner of many awards. Senator John McCain, and of course, the Queen of Soul, Aretha Franklin. I'd ask that we have a few moments of silence. Thank you. Okay. We have the minutes of, and I will come back, excuse me, I'll come back to public comment. We have the minutes of August 7th, 2018. Are there any additions or corrections to those? I will move them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We also have some-
I'd like to abstain on that, Mayor. I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have made that exception. We have some proclamations. One for ovarian cancer, which I will read. Actually, Mr. Scannellberry, did you want to read that? There's no reason why we can't, or you couldn't do that. Do you want to read that one?
Sure, Mayor.
And that's, that's something near dear to your heart.
This is a proclamation declaring September 2018 ovarian cancer awareness month. Whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates that more than 22,240 Americans will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer in 2018. And whereas called the silent killer because the symptoms are so often vague or subtle, ovarian cancer causes more deaths than any other female reproductive system cancers, affecting women of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas if diagnosed and treated early, the five-year survival rate for women fighting this disease is more than 90 percent. Regular medical checkups and learning about the early warning signs of ovarian cancer can save lives. And whereas during the month of September, we recognize those in the medical community who work tirelessly to provide treatment and care and pay tribute to those who have lost their lives to this disease. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the Township of Montclair proclaim September as ovarian cancer awareness month and urge all women and their families in Montclair to get the facts about ovarian cancer.
I shall move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone like to read the prostate cancer awareness month? Or do we have anybody for that one? Then I'll just move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Bentley-Lamar, I believe, Dr. Bassfield, that was-
Yes, I don't believe that they're here today. But I would like to read this. This proclamation is congratulating Mary Bentley-Lamar. Whereas the Council of the Township of Montclair would like to commend Mary Bentley-Lamar on her recent appointment as the 2018 through 2020 North Atlantic Regional Director of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, Inc. And whereas this 110-year-old international service organization founded at Howard University has 300,000 members worldwide, including Omicron Xi Omega Chapter established in 1984 in our township of Montclair. And whereas Mary Bentley-Lamar is the founder and executive director of the Sickle Cell Association of New Jersey and has been active in a number of organizations, including the Newark Boys Chorus School Board of Trustees and past president of Parent Advisory Council, the National Association of Black Storytellers, Indian University Alumni Association, Actors Equity Association, American Federation of Television and Radio Artists, Screen Actors Guild, USO World Shows, the Masters School Parents Association, and the Sickle Cell Disease Association of America. And whereas Mary Bentley-Lamar will lead the North Atlantic Region of AKA in support of their newly-launched program exemplifying excellence through sustainable service. And whereas to commemorate this event and to recognize her role in this initiative, the Omicron Xi Omega Chapter will host a leading with a high note celebration on Sunday, September the 9th, 2018, at the Sheraton Parsippany Hotel. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Township Council of Montclair, congratulate Mary Bentley-Lamar in her new role and acknowledge her many contributions to civic and community organizations. And I so move.
Second.
I'd just like to say that Ms. Bentley-Lamar has done tremendous amount of work, not just here in town, but across the state and nationally, to bring awareness about sickle cell disease. And I noticed some of our, Montclair, our President and Montclair Chapter NAACP is here. The Chairwoman of the Health Advisory Council for the Montclair NAACP is here, along with another member, Mr. William Scott. And Ms. Bentley has worked closely with the NAACP Montclair Chapter over the years to do educational programs and just to really bring this, the sickle cell anemia disease, which primarily targets in outstanding numbers, people of African descent. And she's available to just educate people and to assist us in that way. So I personally would like to thank her for all the work that she's done. And if you want to come out and celebrate, there's still tickets available for the celebration that's coming up. And it will be available online.
Thank you. Do we need to vote? Do we just vote on that? I'm not sure. Did we vote yet? No, we didn't vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And final one is in memoriam of George Walker. And I'm going to move that one. I think there's going to be a memorial or something down the road, so we can do that and read it there. I'll move that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. We'll now move back to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the council on any matter will be happy to hear from you at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
My name is Dr. Jackson. I'm a Diet Global Health Board on the New Jersey and I'm now here at the Montclair branch in NAACP. I'm here this evening, and I would like to be at part of the-
Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Do I need to start over?
No, no.
No, we're good.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. So I would like to read, if you don't mind, our stance for the Lackawanna Plaza plans for the Pathmark, or, I mean, not a Pathmark, but a supermarket. Dear Montclair Planning Board Members, In 102 years that the Montclair branch in NAACP has been in existence, its more than 300 members have advocated for civil rights, social justice, consistent with the Montclair and NAACP Constitution and bylaws. We write today to advise that as a board, as a body of the oldest and largest civil right organization in the world, we stand firm behind adoption of Resolution 18-157. The resolution drafted by the Council of the Township of Montclair on May 22nd, 2018, and its resolve to maintain the integrity of Lackawanna Plaza, including but not limited to the restoration, to the restoration, sorry, to the restoration, where am I, of, to maintain the integrity of Lackawanna Plaza, including but not limited to the restoration of the full-scale supermarket to service the residents of the Montclair community. The council urged the planning board to consider the current plans favorably and with dispatch. We stand in agreement that the historic value of the site should not be compromised but further offered, that the agreement that this historical value of the site should not be compromised but further offer, that the aesthetic value of the site should be consistent with that of the original design. For close to 30 years, the Pathmark supermarket provided a local place for Montclair residents, particularly those who reside in the 4th Ward, to shop for food and critical items related to the nutrition and overall health. Since the closing of the supermarket, residents have either been forced to travel longer distance in and out of Montclair to shop or frequent local bodegas, ads, or convenience store, where the cost of basic items are almost double the cost compared to the supermarket of the, compared to the supermarket or super center. This is unconscionable. Moreover, since health and wellness is a major mandate of the NAACP, our goal is to advocate for the right of every individual to have equal access to proper nutrition. Members of the Montclair branch NAACP Housing, Health, and Education Committee Chair, along with the township residents, and other affiliated groups, signed off in support of this position, urging the planning board to take position with respect to the concerns raised in Resolution 18-157, together with those offered by the NAACP, and to work with us as we move towards the final design of Lackawanna Plaza. Thank you.
And I would just like to add, as the-
Good evening. William Scott, Chair of the NAACP Housing Committee, and also the Co-Chair of the Montclair Housing Commission, always wearing a couple of hats there. But we've been following the entire process for the development of Lackawanna Plaza over the last two years, if not more. And obviously, we're coming up on the fourth anniversary of Pathmark being closed. And obviously, the planning board is deliberating, and they're hearing a lot of testimony. Councilwoman Slavy was there last night, a lot of testimony, okay? And Councilwoman Bassfield was there as well. But I do believe we're coming close to a conclusion. And that's very important. But from a developer's standpoint, they have made compromises that are still in keeping with the resolution that the council has made. And I posed that question to the developer and the attorney last night, and they said, yes, they're still, you know, following pursuit, and they support the resolution at that point. So, you know, we just wanted to make sure that the input of the community is heard. I wanted to take that opportunity at the planning board meeting, but it wasn't time for public comment. We're not sure when public comment is going to be made available, so we wanted to take advantage tonight to present this, a copy of this, to the town council. And as the position paper mentions, we've had about 212 individuals sign off on this position. So we wanted to bring that information to the council, make it public, and, you know, just hopefully we'll get a resolution to this situation as soon as possible. And as the council said, with dispatch, and I think that that's critical, that we move forward with this. And then from a housing commission standpoint, absolutely do not want to lose the opportunity in that development from a residential standpoint, where there's going to be over 31 affordable housing units in that project. So that's critical as well. So, you know, there's major priorities that we're looking at from an NAACP standpoint. Mr. Pellon?
And I'll give a copy of this to the-
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Anyone else wishing to address the council?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Mary Ann Reedy, and I live at 16 Seymour Street in Montclair, apartment 12. So I don't know if you'd all like to come up to behind me, because we're going to, everyone wants to speak. So everyone here are my tenant neighbors, and so what our main concern is, is really just quality of life for us residents living on Seymour Street. So there's lots of confusion, misinformation, and questions, and that's what we're really here for tonight. We don't necessarily think you're going to give us exact answers, but we want to at least, you know, put this out there, that we feel like we're in the dark, and that we're getting different answers to our questions. So what's going to be addressed is the parking. Our understanding is that Seymour Street, there won't be any on-street parking, that it'll be a two-way street, so that's not really an option for us. One of the things that's come up is the Plymouth Lot, right now, we think is going to remain a parking lot. And we'd like to see that be a permit parking lot, for permit parkers only, not to be, what I feel like is that we're, it's the residents and it's the tourists. Whether you live in Montclair or not, if you're not from, you know, where we are, you're basically a tourist. And we are constantly battling for parking with tourists, for restaurants, especially the Wellmont Theater. It's, you know, it's pretty crazy. Like, if you get a spot on a Friday, chances are you're not going to move your car on Monday if you don't have to, because it's that bad. So that's what we really need to know. We've been told, and I've been one of the people to switch my township permit to a Crescent Deck permit, I did that yesterday. And in the paper that I signed, it said that we will be continuing with the same fee of $95 per month. And it did say somewhere in there that it'll be for the duration of the parking, but then, parking, I'm sorry, for the duration of the construction. But then we've been also told, once our permits are up September 30th, it really could change as far as the cost of what we're paying now. So that's, I'm basically, you know, introducing this as far as that our concern is the quality of life with the construction. There's a lot of dirt. Somebody else is going to, you know, talk about that. And then the parking, as far as just feeling like we have someplace that we don't have to go. I mean, you can imagine if you're just gone to Trader Joe's, and you've, you know, gotten your week shopping, or you have your dog from the park, or whatever, just like the day-in and day-out things that residents do, and we've got to walk, you know, blocks and blocks. It's not really, I don't, we don't really feel like it was, we were that considered in the logistics of just, you know, the residents on that street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. Before you receive, did you sign?
Mr. Karasik, do you have any comment?
If you'd like, there are a couple of questions in there that we could answer. Maybe I should do that. Just, no parking on Seymour Street once the project is finished and during the project. That's correct, because it's going to be too-
And will that be as of like September 9th, when they take the other parking lot?
Yeah, well, it's going to happen on September 7th.
7th.
Approximately, September 7th is when Seymour Street will be closed.
Okay.
Partially closed. There'll be a, an interim turnaround, a paved turnaround at the end of Seymour Street. And it'll become two-way then, because otherwise there'll be no way to get in and out.
Right.
And at that point, I don't believe there's going to be any parking on Seymour Street because it's not, it's too narrow.
But will residents, I mean, be able to go down the street and like drop something off if your apartment is there, or?
Yeah, it's not, it's not a thoroughfare. So, I mean, people can stop and get out, drop the-
Just for a second, because I have tons of containers that I'm getting out every day, but that and tickets, it's just-
Well, we'll, I'm sure the manager will address that with their parking people.
Yeah, it would be nice just to ease up on us.
Because we understand you're being inconvenienced by the project. So we'll do everything possible not to make it even worse. The second thing you raised, Plymouth Lot, permit only, I think that was raised to me by one of your people the other day who came to my office, and we're going to discuss that with the parking people. I can't tell you that we're going to do that or not. There is library traffic there, but we will look into it. And there may be ability to reconfigure Plymouth Lot a little bit, get a couple more spots out of it.
If there's library traffic, if that's the main cause, then the short walk to the Crescent Deck is just as convenient for the library as it would be inconvenient for us as residents. Is that not correct there?
I don't have my tape measure, but it sounds, it sounds reasonable. Yeah, I think it's correct.
And also, I mean, I think our main thing is that we're residents. I'm not saying library people aren't residents. You probably are too.
Believe me, I understand. I live on South Florida, so I've got-
Also, with the turnaround, the cul-de-sac, I'm assuming, I'm guessing that's not something that will be done anytime soon.
Well, it will be done within two days after the street's closing. For, you know, it's not the permanent Belgian block cul-de-sac, but it's going to be a working cul-de-sac in which you're going to be able to turn. The developer promises three days, so we're going to try to keep him through his promise.
So you're going to be, we're going to take sidewalks away and all that?
I, listen, I can, I don't have the plan here, but I'm just, I'm trying to answer questions. I, there will be, if you'd like detail, and the manager and I will be happy to meet with you. And, you know, with, get out the plans, and we can go over sort of details. You know, I don't think, I'd rather, it's not that I don't want to do it, I just don't want to give any wrong information tonight. You said your permit-
It just seems like you're taking away, let's call it 30, maybe 40 parking spots south, and then let's call it 50 parking spots north. Let's call it 80 parking spots, and you're really just maybe going to hope that it's going to be at the one across the street with every parking lot.
Well, I do, no.
Which wouldn't at all be 80/80 spots. So that's why, I mean, the street parking temporarily would help until other things transpire, right?
I understand, but again, the reason for no street parking is because it has to be two-way. But I, let me try, what I thought we were going to do is address her questions, and then you can ask your questions, that we can get through. You mentioned permits, you were concerned that your permit fees would change in September.
Right.
No, they won't change. What's happening basically is normally in the Crescent Deck, there's a, the cost of the day and night together is higher than on the outside lot, which you've been paying if you have a C and N permit.
Right.
You're going to continue to pay the price, the cost of a C and N permit through the construction period. And you will get a Crescent Deck pass. And that's not going to change during-
It does say that on the paperwork, so that's what I believe, but I've been told, like, no, that's not, you know, so, but you're saying it.
That is true.
Okay.
Will there be solely a night parking lot? We only have night for permits.
If you have an N permit, then you can get an N, the equivalent of an N permit in a Crescent Deck. So those, I think, did you, I think I have your question, those questions answered, right?
Yes.
There will be new decks, but, you know, there are going to be new parking decks as part of the project. I'm sure you've looked. So there will be parking deck off of what's now, of Seymour Street, and there'll be another parking deck off of South Willow. So there will be options as well.
Oh, South Willow is a parking deck also?
Yes, both sides.
Oh, okay.
So we can again talk more about that, if you meet with us. Okay?
Brian Coward, 16 Seymour Street, apartment 16. Just to address what we were just talking about, we came to the original planning meetings about the development in the approval process, and at that time, we were assured that our parking permit would be accounted for, and we would know where we'd need to park. It is now, this week, the reason we have frustration is, this week is when one of our parking lots closed, we had no information where we were going to park, how our permits were going to be used. We kept getting answers of, well, did you get the flyer on your car? Well, I work, and I have other things. I might not have been in the parking lot when the flyer came. They have our email. They have our phone numbers. Why are we, I mean, I'm paying $1,200 a year per car to park. Why am I chasing down the information? I was promised, when I sat in this thing and came up here before, that this parking would be addressed. And here we are, the parking is disappearing, and it's up to us, the tenants, to find the answers. I don't think that's fair.
And I hear your frustration, but what we were under the impression was that the parking company actually emailed everybody who had permits and made them aware of-
The email said that the park is closing, that the parking lot's closing.
I don't know what, I didn't get one.
Information to go to M Park.
Okay.
And anyone here, doesn't say to turn in your permit. It doesn't say to transfer your permit. It says the parking lot's closing, from our information, go to M Park.
Oh, okay, okay.
But we're not M Park, we are Montclair Parking Authority. And I'm sure you've heard, getting an answer from Parking Authority is impossible. It's been terrible for us. So it's, it's just frustrating. It's just, the development, I stood up here months ago saying, you know what, it's going to be frustrating living through it, it's my neighborhood, I'm not giving it up, I'm willing to stick it through. I'm a renter, just because I like to rent. But it's, it's so frustrating, because we're the ones having to go find the answers when all the information is out there, but it's not being given to any of us. That's not, that's not the way it should be, and we shouldn't have to come here and complain and bang on the table and not there.
You're absolutely right.
We're residents of Montclair. Whether we own property or not, we're residents, I've lived here for 14 years.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. It absolutely doesn't matter. If I may suggest, Madam Clerk, if we could get the, some emails of some of the folks here, and then maybe kind of make sure that we get some of this information out to Parking Authority, so that we can, and maybe could, again, I want to put, give you work, but at least you could daisy chain it sort of through the, some folks, if we could get just a couple of emails, that would be helpful. Because again, we do, we obviously need to do a better job of communication.
We know the permit parking's coming back eventually, but this is two years down the road.
Right.
What are we doing for two years? That's the thing.
If the only answer is Plymouth Park, the permit opening, I mean, if your main concern is because of the restaurant row and all that, Bloomfield Ave, that's very close to Crescent, haven't actually a further parking for Plymouth. So your main concern, I think you all could agree, would be the library, right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, I think-
I'm sorry.
It would be the library, all right? And that would be the only main concern, would be the library for public parking for meters.
Well, but I would just, I would just say, just for me, I think the notion of additional permit parking in the Plymouth Lot, I think is a very interesting idea. I don't, we have to have the parking, the, yeah, I think we'd have to get through the Parking Authority, but it just seems like that might be a way of increasing some capacity. And I, particularly at night, you can definitely, at night, you can definitely do it. But it's a good idea, I, I don't think anybody's thought of it, but I, I think we're absolutely, I think I'm comfortable in saying, I think we would absolutely entertain bringing some more permit parking there.
Excuse me, ma'am, I have a question, I'm sorry. Just so I can understand, are we saying that you did not get email correspondence from M Park? They didn't?
Yes, but it just said, it's closing. Call somebody for more information.
And that was it? Okay.
It didn't explain the process, it just said, for more information, go to whatever. It has nothing, doesn't say turn in your permit, doesn't say how to park the Crescent Deck, and, you know, and it says, even on the map, if you go to the thing, it says every place in green, you can park. Well, two of those are pay-to-park places. How's my permit supposed to work in a permit and pay-to-park place, if you haven't given me directions? We have to go to the park place, and he's like, oh yeah, you turn it in. It would've been nice to know.
And Mr. Mayor, it sounds like somebody has the right email addresses, they're just not giving the right information, or detailed enough information. So maybe that's where, Mr. Karasik, who you see is answering some questions, Mr. Scannellberry, Mr. Stafford can get together to put together a comprehensive email that goes out to that email distribution list, so it's not just you here, it's everybody who's on that list, and of course, you can help share it. And what other emails we're able to capture tonight through the clerk, we'll get that out as much as possible.
Absolutely. I just don't find it feasible to be walking back and forth. I mean, it doesn't seem like a far walk. I don't have kids or groceries most of the time, but for people, I do, and an inconvenience of nighttime, I mean, you know, walking from the Crescent, I'm going to, also guess that there's going to be construction there, so you're really not even going to be able to walk through that park unless you're going to have to walk around eventually. I mean, you know, it could, well, danger.
It's a safety issue for women who come home at certain times. I have many jobs, I am not comfortable. I did not take this apartment to be like New York. I feel very uncomfortable, yes, Montclair, but there's still crime, there's still a lot. I'm outraged, and I feel disrespected.
I think the only answer is that Plymouth Park, to, I mean, a temporary, temporary things over to meters, and put up a couple of signs to say we're using our permit parking. Seems like the only feasible answer, in my opinion. I don't know what everyone else thinks, but, and it also seems like inexpensive, right? You put a couple of those things over meters, and a couple of signs up, that this is a permit parking lot for the next couple of years, use the Crescent Deck, if, I mean, if you guys are-
guys expect us residents to walk over the Crescent Deck, then the library, again, which is the main concern, they should be expected to walk as well.
Because they're open in daytime, so they don't have a risk of safety.
Very good point.
I also have a question about, as far as, say, I turn in my township permit and get this white car for Crescent, when there's a show at the Wellmont, when the Hillsong people barge through town for their four hours a day, am I guaranteed a spot in Crescent?
If you have a permit, you are.
I know everyone's telling me that, but people have been telling me a lot of things.
Put the sign out, and the reserved parking is still available, and they've gotten to the max, they put that sign up. Pull up to the sign, you rock your horn, they come over and they let you in.
And another proposition as far as us specifically, residents of, say, South Willow, South Bullerton, and Seymour, those affected directly by this, is there's always the possibility of you creating some kind of specific permit just for us, so that it's not taken advantage of by other permit holders who just happen to work in town during the day or whatever. There could be a permit, a sticker, where just us residents are allowed to utilize it, such as Plymouth, or the mid-town lot, or whatever. But I don't have kids, I'm more than capable of walking, but you're talking about elderly people, people with children, it just seems that for all of the planning board meetings and all of that, this really wasn't very well thought through. We get these messages that says it's an inconvenience, it's much more than an inconvenience. I mean, this is a year of us having to tailor our lives around how much longer it's going to take us to get to our car, to get to work, to get home from work. It's, it's not, inconvenience is not an appropriate word for this. And I really truly believe, and I'm sure many will disagree, that if we were homeowners who lived in a certain part of town, it would have been handled very differently.
I, I would, I would, and I would wholeheartedly and fervently disagree with you on that. And again, I can just only tell you that it has, has no bearing on how, I think this council, this government functions, we're one town, one people. That we, that we have some, do we have some opportunities for improvement here? Absolutely, yes. But, you know, we have people, Councilman Spillers in that, in that neighborhood, and we have, you know, absolutely no, it makes no difference. And I, you can believe that, I mean, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I can, all I can do is tell you it means absolutely nothing to me.
Mayor, can I just say, just before, I was going to say what I was going to say, I just want to say, you know, on the staff side of this, manager, myself, and many other people who are working on this, we never in a minute think about residents versus apartment holders, renters, or it never happens. What I was going to say is, this is a dynamic situation, it's not a static situation. We're looking at it all the time. If we see people who are in distress and unable, we're going to be making adjustments. The idea of, the idea, for instance, of permits that are just for you guys, that's been out there, and we're going to look and see what exactly, how things develop. So there's not, it isn't fixed for two years, we're looking at it all the time.
The simplest solution to this, to any resident that's being affected by this, is to give, when we're talking about a special permit, I think what's not being clarified is a special permit that would allow us possibly to forego the no parking on any street from two to six in Montclair. If we have a special permit, and the cop comes along and sees one of our cars on the street, we do not get a ticket. That's the simplest idea, the simplest solution, is to give us an exception to that two a.m. to six a.m. rule, and give us a parking, a parking pass that when the, when the cop goes by, or the parking person goes by between two and six, they know that this car does not get a ticket.
If those opens up another ten spots there.
Obviously, we have snow emergencies, and that's a lot of parking streets, so.
And there's no home in any parking deck, so we have to like-
But the thing is, some of this frustration comes from the fact that we have to fight for our parking spots that we already pay for, because they're not monitored at night. They now, recently, in the last two months, the guys are out there ticketing.
Yep.
That's great.
It is.
But it's only now, and it hasn't been for the past years. So the frustra-, this person is still in that parking lot, whether they've got the ticket or not. There's, I still can't park in the parking space, I pay.
I understand.
And it's frustrating. So I think that the simplest solution would be to give the residents that already have parking permits, the ability to have a special permit, whether we've transferred over to the Crescent Deck or not, the ability to park on the street at night and not get a ticket, and not be in a worse one.
I just want to-
I want to just add that Morristown actually has that, where if you prove that you live on a street, now I know that the Seymour Street parking will be taken away, but if you can prove, they allow you to park on a couple streets, if you can prove that you live there, you do get a decal that you put in your window, that you can park 24/7 on the street, and you don't get a ticket, and it's not that many people, and you have to go to, you know, the town manager and everything to get it, but it really does work at Morristown, so just keep me back in on that.
When I used to live in, there was no street parking because they were actually cleaning the streets, like, why can't we park on the street here?
Are, are, are you suggesting we don't clean the streets? Or is that, I'm not sure about that.
If not being cleaned.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Mayor, if I could just, I was just going to bring up what Marion brought up, because my brother lives in Morristown area, and that's true, you know, and Terry was the manager there before here. Morristown has some good ideas, we could maybe get some help from that idea. My, my former neighbor at the Rock Cliff where I live, Yvette Mendez, just moved to your street and your building. Yvette just called me about this, she didn't realize what she was getting into when she left my building to go to yours, but I have tremendous empathy for you folks and what you're going through, so anything we can do, if the manager, working with the town attorney and the others can give you some special attention, I'd really like to see you get that, you know, because you're going to go through a period, and it's going to all be fine after, let's hope. I supported this only because I thought we could do something to mitigate the problems, and I think that's what we're still working on, we've got to mitigate the problem that you've been facing, so, you know, I'm conscious of this because of my own neighbor, former neighbor.
I wanted to say something nice about one of your employees, because I just feel it should be said. I spoke to Gary from the Parking Authority today, and he was incredibly helpful and very kind, and gave me his phone number, and was like, if you have any concerns, if you see anything weird happening, like, he was like, update me, you know. He said basically, you know, this is his job and he's doing his best, but I just wanted to let you all know that he was incredibly helpful and kind.
He's a top person.
That meant a lot.
He's the top, he's the top person.
Mr. Exarney, Gary is the gentleman that I'll be speaking with, regarding the suggestion with this requirement.
Yeah, I spoke to him about that today as well, and he was like, I'll rip out meters, but I got to leave a couple for the businesses, because apparently they're on his back too, but.
He's calling number one, the Traffic Bureau, this department.
He was, he went out of his way to try to reach me three times today, and it meant a lot, so, thank you.
Keep in touch with him.
That's what he said to do it.
Yeah. We'll, we'll get there, I mean, we'll get there, but I'm serious, we'll get there.
Valerie Barola, I live in Seymour Street, apartment six. We have two issues, now you heard about the parking. That is a whole, you know, can of worms, but we have a more immediate problem that goes to, Marion identified as a quality of life issue. My house is full of construction dust and dirt, and I think someone tells me that there's a social media video, what, my understanding is that when that dirt is, that parking lot is being dug, that they're supposed to wet down the dirt. Well, they don't wet it down, the only time it gets wet is when it rains, and then they don't dig. But my apartment, I face the whole, I face the whole thing, is just full of construction dirt. I've got it in my house, I've got it in my bed, I've got, I have two chihuahuas, they're small little things on the floor, I wash them, they're full of it. I mean, it's coming in because it's not being properly taken care of. I don't know what's in that dust, you know, one could argue that it's dirt, I don't know that, I don't know, you know, construction. The other day, Monday, I was on my way to a dentist to get a root canal, so I wasn't feeling too well to start with, and I ran into a construction manager, or someone that appeared to be a manager, and two other men there, and I just said, look, you know, you're not following procedure. He says, well, it's only asphalt. Well, yeah, okay, it's only asphalt, but it's in my house. You know, it's in my house because it gets particles, it flies in, so the question becomes, who's managing that spot? And who's overseeing that? Is it you, is it the EPA? I mean, the parking? Okay, you live with the parking, but I shouldn't have to live with dirt in my house. So I think somebody else can, can address that.
I just want to say the dirt, I live right downstairs from her, and I have asthma, and have been doing my treatments more ever since. I don't see the dirt, but my lungs feel it. Again, I feel disrespected, and, you know, that's more medicine I have to take. It's just, somebody do something.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have, we'll speak, absolutely.
Thank you.
Anything? Okay. Just wanted also to say hello to Mr. DelGaudio from the county, our new liaison, I think he was introduced a bit ago. Good to see you, Frank, thanks for coming. Also a Montclair resident.
Oh.
Yeah, let's, let's just say Frank and Water have become two close friends lately. Okay, well, thank you, we will, thank you, we'll, we'll-
Thank you for coming.
Uh huh.
Excuse me, we can't hear on this side. Thank you. This pending ordinance has been published and posted according to law. This is an ordinance amending Montclair Code, chapter 228, article one, and refers to parking restrictions for the Montclair High School area.
So anyone present wishes to address this particular ordinance? Seeing no one else, close the public hearing, counsel?
I just have a question, how is this different than our previous parking issue?
The second page has a red line in paragraph B, deletion is four, four words, a maximum of seventy-five, the elimination of that false maximum, which is us.
So how many will be issued? What is the new maximum?
There isn't a maximum set by the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's basically on the need basis.
Okay, that's, that's a good answer. Okay, thank you.
Roll call?
Counselor Bascoverville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes. Item B is an ordinance amending Montclair Code, chapter 44, officers, employees regarding the title of township engineer, and I so move. Discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Bascoverville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes. Item C is an ordinance amending Montclair Code, chapter 44, officers, employees regarding the title of purchasing agent, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Counselor Bascoverville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you.
We have a consent agenda, items one through six. Does anyone have a need to pull any of these from the consent agenda?
Ms. Fair, Counselor Schlegel, I would like to pull number five.
Okay, so I will move, Mr. Mayor, can I put two for discussion?
Sure.
Oh, you know, okay, I'm getting close to just, okay.
We still have a lot left, so we can do the other.
Yeah, so we have, what do we have on consent? One.
Three, four, six.
Three, four, six. Okay, one, three, four, I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a roll call on that?
Any, any money ones?
Yes, Counselor Bascoverville.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes. Item two is a resolution authorizing the township to enter the deferred compensation administrative services agreement with Lincoln Retirement Company, LLC, and I will move that.
Thank you.
Just for discussion, yeah?
Thank you, Ms. Fair. Questions more, just to Mr. Stafford, I'd asked at the previous meeting for some of the fee information, which Mr. Stafford provided, I thank you for that. As you can imagine, it's a pretty thick, you know, well, long list of fees, et cetera. So I was just looking through that more closely, and I wanted to know from Mr. Stafford if there was any reason or harm from delaying this till our next meeting, so I could look at that further before I ask for that request, or is there something time pressing on this?
Candidly, I don't know of anything time pressing, and our next meeting is next Tuesday, so I would say there's no reason why it couldn't be held until next Tuesday.
So I would ask-
That I know of.
Yeah, if no objection, that it be table till next meeting, just so I could look at the numbers that were given to me. I appreciate you sharing it, I just haven't had a chance to look at all the numbers.
I make motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then-
Just for, just for the record, it's being table till the next meeting.
Till the, till the next meeting, yes.
Thank you.
The next one was item five, I believe, correct? The, and that's a resolution authorizing the township to enter into an electric distribution company aggregation agreement with public service, electric and gas, in connection with the township's government aggregation program, I so move.
Second.
Discussion?
I have a question. I, it was, it was my understanding that we, that we were part of a cooperative that's going to be purchasing these utilities?
The township would be part of a cooperative, but the township would, the cooper-, neither the cooperative nor the township would be purchasing commodity. Individual ratepayers would purchase the, the commodity through the cooperative.
Okay, but the group that's going out to, to, we're part of, of other towns?
The township would be.
Okay, so what, my question is then, on the last page, page fourteen of this resolution, there's a fee schedule of administration fees and technical fees at $123.60 an hour, who's getting paid?
That would be to PSENG.
So I don't, I don't get it.
This would be an agreement between the township-
Mm-hmm.
-and PSENG in connection with the energy aggregation program. It's an agreement proposed to each of the, what would be the member municipalities by PSENG, as it is permitted to do under the administrative code. So if PSENG incurs fees, administrative fee, fees not recovered through the base rate, according to this agreement, PSENG can recover those fees from the member municipalities each. Additionally, if it incurs computer programming charges or technical support and assistance charges, as written, it would recover those fees from the member municipalities.
So we would pay that, not, not the township?
Yeah.
Hmm. Okay.
Are those, are those fees, Mr. Stafford, that are in addition to what would have been paid now? In other words, is this an additional cost as a result of doing this? Because they're not, they're not in a schedule already with this?
I don't know the answer, but, and, and maybe I shouldn't suppose, but I suppose that these fees are covered in our rate-paying fees. In other words, when I, at my house, when PSENG incurs an administrative fee, that's part of my electric bill, both the commodity and the processing, so I suspect that PSENG is seeking to cover its possible expenses through this agreement, which it will not be able to do once it does not supply the commodity.
But in your example, the ratepayer is paying that, not the municipality. In this example, it's the municipality, correct?
In this example, it would be the municipality.
Thank you. Ms. Fair? Mr. Stafford, how's this different? Is this a separate one? I know that the township currently is part of a program, as is the school district, et cetera, right? Where we buy our energy through--
For township buildings?
Yes.
We're part of a cooperative, yes.
And that's not this one? This is the separate--
This would be for every customer of PSENG.
Yeah, no, I got all-- I just want to make sure that we're talking about that one then, instead of the town one, correct?
Correct.
Is this covered by the 750?
Well, the 750 is a max. That's the cap.
Yeah, so, you want to talk about the maximum?
All right, which is a question I ask because the rate per hour, if they do 20 minutes worth of work, it's their cap. It is a question I ask to the attorney representing the cooperative, and so your point's valid.
Yeah. 750 is most of the cost.
Okay. Roll call?
Counselor Bascoverill.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
No.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
No.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the public sale of one plenary license, retail consumption license, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion?
Question, do we know when the auction will be?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay.
Not yet, but after-- in the fall.
Oh, great. Good. I know, I have a rule of thumb that it'll always stay tight.
In the fall.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Bascoverill.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Okay. And the bill is-- Yes, thank you. Whereas invoices against a township of Montclair in favor of the following persons, for the amounts set opposite their respective names, have been received, duly audited, and found correct, therefore be resolved by the council of the township of Montclair and the County of Essex. Said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid, that the checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively inherent after stated, on computer printout attached hereto, and made a part hereof. This bill list is dated August 28, 2018, the amount to $3,314,854.34. And I so move.
Second.
Question? Comments? Roll call?
Counselor Bascoverill.
Yes.
Sorry, wrong page. Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes. Mr. Krasik, any comments? Mr. Skilber?
Yes, Mayor, just one item. On September 23, and this is a West Orange people, September 23 will be the 28th Mayor's Annual 5K Run Walk benefiting the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition. If you wish to register, it would be walkforovariancancer.com. That's walkforovariancancer.com, and that's September 23. That's all, Mayor.
Madam Clark, anything?
I would just like to add to the deputy manager's talk. We do have a number of these wristbands, recognizing that this is National Ovarian Cancer Month. We'll have them in my office, and anyone from the public, if you'd like to stop by and receive them, we have them available.
Thank you. Mr. Stafford?
Thank you, Mayor. The excessive heat and humidity are forecast to continue through tomorrow, and although we've done our best to blast out notice through email and use of our normal social media platform, I wanted to say tonight that cooling centers are available here in municipal building tomorrow, as well as our two branches of our library and at the County of Essex's Cody Arena. Information for anyone seeking it would be available on our website. Likewise, our Health Department has several clinics for humans, cats, and dogs over the next month of September, and information, an enormous amount of information is available with respect to those programs, as well as events and other issues on our website. Thank you.
Did we consider doing anything with the pools this time around?
No. No.
Counsel? Any comments, counsel?
Well, I just came back from Hyannis, Florida. Bill Hurlock, I've got some stuff for you, but I wanted to just say to everyone was, unexpectedly, Robert Kennedy Jr. was there the night I arrived for my brother's son, my nephew's wedding. It was a wonderful wedding up in Yarmouth, in Cape Cod. And I saw the notice in the Cape Week that Robert Kennedy Jr. was going to speak, and you all know that that means a lot to me, so I redirected my whole night, and my wife and I met with Robert Kennedy Jr. He signed the new book that he wrote, American Values, a great, great book, and he signed the sketch of his father that I've shown him. But this is a great book. American Values talks about, you know, working together and everybody being less partisan and more civil to each other. So, I had a good two hours with him and his family. Ethel Kennedy was there, the whole family was there. They really appreciated it. I made a statement about the fact that Governor Murphy is going to get what's called the Robert Kennedy Ripple of Hope Award. He's getting an award in December in New York. And this whole museum that I visited, the John F. Kennedy Museum, was a terrific, terrific place, inspirational. I had not been there before, as much as I'm a big Kennedy fan, but the whole Cape Cod area is just, you know, booming right now, and it's busy. But what I took away from the whole thing was Senator McCain died while I was there. This whole, you know, Kennedy visit and the Kennedy Museum was moving me, and then I see Senator McCain. Now, one of my students at Montclair, they gave me a great book. I cannot seem to find it in my library of hundreds of books. It's called Citizen McCain. It's a great book with Senator McCain's picture. I've got to get it out again and reread it, because I really like him. I liked him, and my student gave it to me as a gift years ago. And Senator McCain represents, you know, the best of this country, just as I thought Robert Kennedy did. So, I'd like to say to everybody, you know, we just got to work across these lines, these partisan lines. I know you all believe that, and that's something I think that Ted Kennedy was certainly working for, as a senator, working with Senator McCain. Robert Kennedy seemed to want to bring people together of all backgrounds, black and white, rich and poor, and President Kennedy was a, you know, leader that brought a lot of people together. So, if we could just get past Democrat, Republican, and partisanship, and just look at what's needed by our country, and then a town like Montclair is a model, you know, for getting things done, look how we try to handle these problems tonight. It's just a wonderful thing to be working with all of you here, and I want to thank Bill again. He went to San Juan, where my cousins were all up from San Juan and Cape Cod for a wedding, but I wish I had this before that time, but they were telling me that Puerto Rico is recovering. Thanks, Bill, for the San Juan star, but Puerto Rico is recovering, but it's still a long way to go, and we've got to focus on that. It's part of our country. So, just want to thank everybody. Remember, September 11 is coming up. We won't have a meeting before then to mention this, but September 11, got a wonderful invitation again from the county, from Joe, County Executive Joe D., and the others. I think I'm going to go up there this year at 8:00, and then come down to our little Wa Chong Memorial. So, I urge everybody to go to the County Eagle Rock Reservation, where there's a wonderful memorial at 8:00 a.m., and then come down to Montclair just at 8:30, 9:00 or so, just say a prayer down at our old memorial. You know, Scott, I said Scott Johnson, I think we just found, he's one of our residents who they recently identified the remains of, and he was one of the folks that they still hadn't identified or confirmed. But Mrs. Johnson was active at the time of 9/11 in Montclair. We just had so many people we lost, so much to be thankful for, and so much to work together for. So, I just wanted to bring you all that message back from Cape Cod, which was a wonderful trip I just came back from yesterday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Just quickly say then, just want to give a quick thank you to residents who came out to Porter Park this weekend. I know a bunch of them got together to see what they could do to make sure they helped the park, and make sure the park that's utilized is maintained in great condition. So, it was great meeting many of them, and just wanted to say thank you for their efforts. Just also announce that you know we have the meeting next week. But just to start to get the word out there, we do have the Sofias Walk on Saturday, the 8th, at 9:00 a.m. in Canterbury Park. Dance on the Lawn is the same day, I believe, at 3:00 p.m. in St. Luke's. I know I've gotten a lot of emails actually asking about that, Dance on the Lawn, so that's great to see there's more and more publicity around that, more people going out for it. So, great news there as well, but just wanted to put those two events out there, so people mark it on their calendars. And also, again, just thank the residents who came out on the weekend, thankfully before it was quite dishot, but hopefully this passes soon, too. Thanks.
I'd just like to remind everyone that on this coming Saturday, September 1, they're having a block party. The Bright Hope Church on Mission Street is having a block party. I know the mayor and I have attended in the past. I look forward to joining. It's open to everyone to come. Also, on September 9, they're having the 35th Annual Church Community Breakfast at 8:00 a.m. at St. Mark's Church in Montclair on Elm Street. The theme this year is diversity, equity, and inclusion, God's mission and ours, and Dr. Kendra V. Johnson, our school superintendent, will be the guest speaker this year.